Information, inspiration, motivation, conscientization et surtout distraction. Gabete tout votre popoie avec Flore. Gabete tout qui produit radio TV que entendez et gavez dans différents lettres.
I'm your surgeon, Dr. Roman Joseph.
This show is brought to you by Jeff Hess at Unilex. 305 255 2797. Ça c'est avocat Pam. Jeff Hess spécialisé dans accident machine. Ou glisser ou tomber dans la rue, dans maquette. Avocaboyer les cougnes là c'est Jeff Hess. 305 255 2797. Jeff tant bien à blà espagnol. 305 255 2797. Allô avocazazé Jeff. M'apprêlez les cougnes là. 305 255 2797. Nous toutes connaissez si au trois gros, au soir, au bel, c'est pas photo. C'est une condition médicale qui est capable de traiter. C'est pas à qui quantité si top au café, ni combien kilomètres au marché et même qui qualité manger ou mangé. Fait premier part. Pour la décision pour commencer vivre en santé jeudi à. Vina prendre bonger informations sur programme en coopération Gastrix Livre dans l'hôpital Jackson. Relais-nous dans 305 585 8746. Point inscrits le jeudi à pour participer. Non, you seminar gratis au soir allez sur site internet noir dans Jacksonkenherbe point O R G. L'hôpital Jackson côté miracle fait chaque jour.
Bonjour, bonsoir. Bienvenue à une nouvelle sortie de Radio TV avec Dr. Flore. Radio TV c'est radio à télévision combinée ensemble dans sud Floridland. Nous faire radio à télévision pour inspirer. Radio à télévision pour motiver. Radio à télévision pour conscientiser. Et nous dire que la vie en pas toute sérieuse ça fort ou capable d'étonner. It gives me great pleasure today specifically this week and this month to have that exclusive interview with District 9 School Board Luisa Santos. She is our guest a year later because she was our guest as a candidate and she kept her word to stay connected with her community. And also there is no coincidence that she's doing it and this week which is also Teachers Appreciation Week. School Board Member Luisa Santos, congratulations again. Welcome. We are ready for your six months review. Sit back, sit back, sit back and we'll see how we do with the grading and it feels so good where we can. And three languages and where you will really come put into action your message of the next generation. Welcome.
Thank you so much Dr. Flore for always doing your part in keeping our community informed. Bonsoir and buenas noches. It's really amazing to be able to stay connected to community and you're right. It's about six months since I got to this position and we have done so much. We just finished, I want to start here. We just finished visiting 54 schools. That is all of the schools, the public schools in District 9, which yes took a lot of time and effort, but it is my favorite thing because I got to meet with the people on the ground. Our teachers, our counselors, our SROs, our students, our principals and really, you know, I walked almost into every single classroom. You know, joke about, you know, they didn't bring their walking shoes because we walked every corner. And it was such an incredible exercise in really connecting what we hear and what we talk about with what happens on the ground.
That mean, um, um, School Board Member Santos, you did not stop your canvassing. Love it and I love it. And today, um, the dialogue and your six months review with your community will focus in four aspects. As an author, are you the same Luisa Santos prior to November 2020 than now the School Board Member? Tell us about the person. What has changed in you? Do you have time to have breakfast, lunch, snack?
No, I think you understand exactly what it's like to run a campaign and it is no different. So it is the same kind of acceleration, non-stop, talking to community, really. I, I, I am the same exact person. I bring the same exact energy and, and I keep the same exact promises. And now I just get to work on them from a different angle. And that's, you know, an honor. You need all angles. You need grassroots, you need advocacy, you need, you know, policymakers, but unless all of them are working well and in conjunction, we don't get the best results. And so, um, no, it doesn't feel very different. Um, I, you know, I do have a long commute, but it's okay. I get to listen to podcasts about education, which I love doing and to audiobooks, which I love.
Something to relax, music. Do you, do you listen to music? And also does the person Luisa Santos have a day, a me time? Because we, we, we want you to be successful for, for, um, you, you're working, I take on the strategic plan for five years, but I know it's four and four and whatever, but we want you to be strong. Then tell us about what you do as a hobby. What does the person do as a hobby?
Well, I, and I always talk to our young people about how important it is to balance your life. So I'm by no means, you know, letting go of, of the things that make me who I am. So I still make time to read. I still, this one I'm not so good at, but I try really hard to still exercise every now and then. Um, and you know, and to try to eat as healthy as possible and go outside and, and just breathe, right? Consciously take a step back and take ten deep breaths. Sometimes that works magic in between two meetings. Um, and, and I really try to live that out so that our students who, who are, you know, starting to build their lives, understand that for all of us to stay healthy mentally, physically, emotionally, we need to set ourselves up for success. And, and I try very hard to implement that too.
Okay, I like that last sentence of, um, set yourself up for success when that first aspect of the person. Um, Luisa Santos some still has her, a place where she reads. We read, we hear, read, 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 we hope it's not work-related reading. Um, she finds sometimes to for some outdoors activities. She's still smile, the energy is still there. I heard from time to time exercise, that mean out of 30 days at least she exercised twice. Um, the month, that's not bad. We, we hope she finds some time to sleep as well. Now we're gonna go with the second P, the professional. Um, drive, guide us, drive with us in your journey. Um, when you just start, you are considered as a freshman and, um, do you go to some trainings? Then, um, was the first month bumpy? Then where, how do you feel now in your six, um, in, in your half, a half year?
Yeah, well, I, um, there was a small orientation and, um, but, but you know, you get sworn in and then you have your first meeting literally immediately after, which, you know, threw me off for, for a second, but, um, after that, you know, you learn by doing and, um, I think the biggest lesson is learning by being in the schools, by visiting, uh, talking to community and, and we continue to do that. So professionally though, um, I, I also, you know, I'm, I'm a lifelong learner. That's what I want for every single one of our students. And so I signed up for a certificate in education finance from Georgetown. Um, I attend, already attended two conferences, um, for school board members. And so I'm meeting lots of people from all over the nation who in some areas are doing amazing work, way better than we are. And in some areas they're asking me about how we are doing things. And strong collaboration and professionally, you know, the core of what I get to do in this role that, that is different from anything I could do outside of this role is pass policies. And, uh, you know, we've passed three really substantial items that are very important and I can jump into those right now or if you want.
Yes, because in that segment of professionalism, you get to really give us your report and your accomplishments.
Yes, so, so I'm really proud of three items that we've passed that I introduced. Obviously I have sponsored and passed other items introduced by other board members, but I'll talk briefly about those three. The first one, um, was H8 Support for Undocumented and Mixed Status Families. We had amazing student speakers who are TPS, DACA, or who are documented, but their parents are undocumented. Come and tell us the importance of having better guidance. And so now because of that item, our college advisors every year will have annual training to update them because we know TPS and DACA and so many things change all the time. And so to update them so they have the right information to share with those students so they can continue. And as you know, I was undocumented and I know that having that information would have helped me so much and saved me so much trouble.
Can you, can you repeat again? Item H8, then spell it, what does it stands for again?
Yeah, it will support our undocumented and mixed status.
Okay. And it all. But when, by, by the word support, um, what kind of support specifically would they be getting?
Yep, two different things. One, the training for the counselors on an annual basis. And the one is a resource guide, which is going to be print and digital, re-languages, and, um, it will be available starting in the fall for next year. We have students and organizations from United We Dream and Flick to, uh, you know, College Board helping us put together that guide. So it's very thorough and accurate and helps, um, the families and the students who sometimes don't want to self-disclose to counselor, but need the support and if it's available, they can self, you know, help themselves.
And I like it because, um, as a former social worker myself, I think, um, it's very important to really create a bridge where we help connect, where families get to be connected without having to do the disclosure, as you said, um, Board Member Santos, but find the resources, from legal resources, from food, from, um, from everything, health and, and clothing, um, shelter. And, and, um, and I applaud you for that. The policy?
Yeah, so the second one is H3, which is our commitment to clean energy by 2030. As you know, we are the largest customer of FPL. We consume the most energy. We spend $65 million every year on energy alone and to be the leaders in creating a sustainable future, which by the way, all of our students say is one of the most important things for them, along with mental health, which I'm working on for a future item, not yet, but coming. Um, and, um, and so this commitment does three things. One, it creates a task force, the Clean Energy Task Force, which, um, includes experts from all kinds of field. It very importantly includes cabinet members from a lot of departments because they're the ones that have to execute on this. It includes representatives from our bargaining units, U T D, ASME, all of them, um, a PTA representative. And, um, this task force will create the Sustainability Action Plan, which will say, okay, if we want to have only clean energy by 2030, what do we have to do a year, six years, etc. And, um, the task force will bring back the policies that we will then adopt in February of 2022. It also did a board workshop, which is going to happen June 16th, where the board is going to listen and learn from experts from all over the nation to be able to understand the topic and to have the buy-in so that we all care just as much about sustainability as each other.
Um, School Board, um, Santos, um, I, I want to add one component into the task force is that, um, university students, you know, um, first and second year in the field of environmental and climate, um, from, um, FAU, um, FMU and also FIU, they can be, I know the word expert is good part of the board, but you'll be amazed because April is Earth Day. That's good to have those students that have projects that are part of big, 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 um, environmental and, um, expertise down the road. Then it's good to get, to get their feedback as well. If you could, if you could at least have, um, a, um, a one-week recruitment before the, before the 16th and even an Instagram send something that you're looking for and a passionate environmental tally, some ages, um, 18 to 21, you'll be amazed and have them the platform, give them also the platform to share their, their, um, their thoughts.
We couldn't agree more and I was so excited to find out that actually, um, you know, we did partner with college students who are completing a project currently, a team of amazing college students who, yes, are newer in the career, but have so many ideas and.
Ideas.
Of what they're learning with their ideas. It's incredible. So they, um, you know, really are doing like the framework of the Sustainable Action Plan. So there's already, before I even, you know, got involved, there's an amazing group of students, of college students who have been leading and supporting with one of their professors who kind of partnered and, and connected the dots. Um, and we certainly, you know, there's of course the student advisor will serve on the task force and, uh, will continue to find ways. You know, the Aspen Challenge winners for Miami Dade, um, a lot of the projects focused on sustainability. So our students are burning with ideas and, and ready to, to work for this goal.
Okay, congratulations. The next one?
Thank you. And then, um, this one is really about transparency and accessibility is another thing that I talked so much about. And, um, this item is, uh, just passed unanimous support, co-sponsorship at the last meeting, um, to livestream our meetings. Uh, currently, as you know, yes, they're on the website, but if you're not in the know and you know where to click, it's very difficult. And there are many, many municipalities from city of Miami, city of Doral, Miami Dade County, that are all live streaming their meetings on social media, Twitter, Facebook, Instagram, which is way easier and way more accessible for people to just kind of click in and get a notification. And, um, that is supposed to take into effect in July and, you know, starting in the end of summer, we'll see some amazing board meetings livestreamed.
Excellent, excellent. And, um, we heard of the person. We are, we are appreciating her professionalism, but the professionalism is not focusing in just her being a school board member for her district, but she also studied by telling you that she's also a learner. Today, our guest, School Board District 9, Luisa Santos. We applaud her on the week that is also Teacher Appreciation Week. We are moving forward now briefly, briefly, um, that, that, that is the sensitive part, the political aspect of the job. Anything that, um, you can, you observe, um, that, um.
Yeah, about the politics.
You can tell your community?
Yeah, I think what's interesting is that, um, you know, uh, someone in, in my office called it the honeymoon phase. There's a phase where you're a freshman where, um, I think a lot of the politics don't really apply as much because people are kind of not sure what to do with you, right? They're kind of reading you out and seeing what, what you're about. And so I think I've made it very clear that I am one, um, if we align on an issue, I want to work with you to see that issue through, right? Um, and, and that is my main goal because at the end of the day, what I'm doing is here to serve, to make sure our students all have access to an equitable and excellent school system. And so I've been fortunate, fortunate that so far, there really has not been, uh, much politicking, um, which, which I really appreciate because I've been able to stay focused on the issues and the students and the teachers. I hope it stays that way.
And, um, I, I, I value the, the answer because, um, I remember I was having a very, um, passionate conversation with some parents. And now this is the parent and me sharing with you why I, I appreciate the sacrifice you're making to really, um, be with us because, um, people, um, all over the world gonna see that dialogue is that from the perspective of the parent, even though as women, we wear several hats, we just want to focus on the issues that matter to, for our children. In my case, for example, um, I made the experience of being a parent's school's choice this year, um, I compare, compared to the previous years. And I thank the parents to their choice. It's good. Um, if you didn't know about the program, it's that as a parent, you, you can, um, apply at a specific time and, um, for your child to be in, in a clo, in a school of choice. And still within the public system because I am a pro supporter of the public school system. However, um, the things that a parent need such as, um, transportation, for example, I want to feel that I can tell my, um, school board member about that without pressuring her, giving her the opportunity to access, talk also to other parents and, um, explore it for the greater good. Then, um, that's an issue, transportation and the area of parent's school choice that is not there and that's gonna be explored. If you, if you look into it and there's a policy connected to it, that's not politic, it's something that benefit parents, the community, your platform and your long-term goal. And for this, I, I gave you my little problem as it comes for transportation and also I, I am wearing the parent hat. Another thing also is that, um, um, the nutrition, you know, um, aside from expert, um, you know, um, clean energy, then we would like to see, um, a program and even a policy. Well, you know, the movie Big Mama, where kids can have a Big Mama Day and it can be maybe my gift to you to the district night. And, um, they eat, you know, we have the truck days in the school, but it can be one, once in a while that one parent, um, or the parents bring foods to the kids. But with all the regulations, because some kids have allergy, but it will be more culturally sensitive. It will create more appetite and joy for the kids and it will create a non-traditional approach in the nutrition. Then, um, then that's, that's, that's how maybe you and I can, can, um, inspire whoever's watching the interview in the area of politics. Then the last P, it's popular. Then greeting yourself now, I feel that you're doing good because, uh, there's no conflict. You don't have a C, you obvious, you surpass the C. You're doing your best already, which puts you already at a great position in your six months. Then, um, tell me the word popular, do you feel that, um, that matters to you? Um, what are you listening? What, what is the community saying?
You know, I don't think that, uh, certainly popular doesn't matter to me. I think sometimes to do the right thing, you have to become unpopular and I'm okay with that. Um, I haven't had to go there yet and I'm more than happy and willing to go there. I also think that what matters more to me is, is access, right? As opposed to being popular, I want you to know whoever you are watching, that you can reach me and you can talk to me and bring these issues and that with fidelity, I am going to go explore them. And yes, sometimes they're going to be programmed. They're not going to be within my purview as a policymaker, but I can certainly always connect you, guide you, advocate for you. Um, and that's, that's what I want everyone to know. So beyond being popular, I just want to be accessible. Um, but certainly I will say the policies that we have passed are very popular from all people because a lot of people in our community understand the absolute need and urgency around committing to, to clean energy. And they understand the possibilities, as you mentioned, for a future, for our schools to be leaders in this, for our students to be able to go into the clean energy jobs, to be leading. Um, and so I think, you know, policies being popular, that's exciting and that matters to me. And I think our policies so far have been.
Okay, we're gonna go and bring a sense of inclusion in the interview. I'm gonna summarize, um, briefly and clear. I want to publicly say that, um, radio TV with Dr. Flore has been the first radio televised show in the Asian community going strong 11 years and also very sensitive to the three, um, more dominant communities. And un point ici qui fait quoi? Um, um, Board Member District 9 qui se distribue moins qu'aux parents et man district, um, sept ou. Il dit que l'impétue toi et loi pour aider la communauté. Il fait yon qui c'est H8 pour supporter et Simon qui gagne TPS. Il fait yon lot qui c'est H3 qui pour aider par exemple la transparence que réunion yodou est publiques, yodou est livestream. Et bien ça est important pour lui. Même en deal si il gaitant comme moon depuis que Lilang job landy dit il est même libre, il t'a même par exemple des titres pour faire ses exercices. Même en deal tout, est-ce que Lilang politique, il dit Bibel politique, il c'est de loi que le voter. C'est la daille au populaire, gagne la daille. C'est pour gagner énergie qui pro pour des années qui pouvait. Now I give you the floor for you to connect, um, con la comunidad latina parce que ellos también miran a este programa. Entonces rápidamente un, un resumen de las políticas que ya usted estableció.
Y muchísimas gracias a toda nuestra comunidad que también se sintoniza de la comunidad latina. Ha sido un gran honor poder servir estos primeros seis meses. He podido tener el honor de pasar políticas, leyes sobre nuestra junta escolar de todo, desde transparencia y accesibilidad para que ustedes tengan la información que necesitan. También en lo que se trata de tener un futuro donde trabajamos con el, con nuestro sistema ecológico y tenemos mejores prácticas de el consumo de electricidad, consumo de agua, etc. Y también muy importante apoyar a nuestras familias y comunidad indocumentada, DACA, con DACA, con TPS, para que tengan el apoyo que necesitan y la información que necesitan para poder ser exitosos en sus pasos después de la graduación. Que es, al final del día queremos que cada estudiante tenga esa oportunidad a seguir sus sueños y que tengan las herramientas para poder hacerlo exitosamente.
A felicitamos, bravo, complimé. Congratulations. So far in this show, you are at eighty-nine percent, so very close to the achiever. And why we do it, it's to be fair and let people give us our feedback. Because if it's for me, you already start as an achiever, um, your receptivity, you know, I can be firm, tough with you at times, maybe sometimes I will say, I don't hear from you, I'm mad and things like that, but you still remain present. And, um, when the school year start, feel free to reach out to your community, um, through me and others and give us the perspective, the full perspective, because I think we are very hopeful that kids can go in person in the vaccinations. And we thank you and we thank your entire team and, um, keep up the good work.
Merci, merci and stay in touch and thank you everyone. Buenas noches.
Buenas noches.
You mon choisi pour prouver.
Première raison, investir, moi j'ai investi, c'est investi à Paris-Ahiti. C'est des familles, tous c'est des Ahitits. Et ensuite, on fait sous café, ma communauté a 27 ans et puis il y a pas qu'être mon, etc. On est professionnellement comme un dosa. Comme pas mettez pas.
Qui sait yon monde qui boit ici pensait que la paix d'Ahiti l'a appris. Si c'est.
Parce que son district, donc il a des billions de dollars, mais l'on a acheté non même, non seulement les deux pays, les deux communautés avancées, liées économiquement, mais les deux autres organisations, on a payé la caisse, l'autre côté, l'autre mon match supporté. C'est un bail extraordinaire parce que la moche qui gagne, il empile l'argent qui roule là-bas. Ne pas dire que soit mon amour, oui, des fois, mais quand même, c'est un district qui économique, moi par là qui très fort, etc. C'est un communauté qui besoin était très forte, très capable politiquement, on mettre coin question, moi c'est pas là pour prendre ces lieux.
Okay, et deuxième raison?
Deuxième raison est ahitien doit toujours faire bizarre, il sait pas, il gagne, il me dit, il m'a fait bizarre, il sait mori ça parce que les petites moeurs ahitien, les mouvées nassé là, même là, faire au dos, soit là, on fait, c'est ahitien habillé, c'est voir un choix.
Qui l'a, comment faire quand qui naît? Tu vas le ciel là, tout seul, pas, pas.
La vie pas comme disa. I don't say that.
You're the only one. How do we make it global?
We're the only one. It's the only one. I'm not Haitian. I'm not able to discriminate, but I'm in the same category. It's different in the winter because. There's no interest in investing in the flow. And I'm not possible to buy from there. Possible to buy from me, but I'm not able to. I'm not able to. Five hundred thousand. More than an foreigner. You have to pay for it. And the other one, who thinks the same, even though we're exactly what they need. We know who the community needs, we understand it, etc. But we're not the only ones who are bad. We're the only ones in the community.
And by Pastor Demosthen, point two, because I say, it's only you introduction. And while you're playing the television, you're on the radio, etc. And what's important, I say, we're not only here for preneed. But next time, we'll have different types of packages. For example, fruit. We're the ones who testify, fish, pork, etc. And then for the birthday of the mayor, it's about prevention. We're the ones who are grateful. We're the ones who ate it, drowned it. It's about preparing before. And then we're the ones who contact.
Three hundred and fifteen, ninety-seven, thirteen. Seventy-six. Three hundred and fifteen. And seven, eight, six, three, one, five, eight, seven, one, three. Seven, four, six, three hundred and fifteen, ninety-seven, thirteen.
Seven, eight, six. Eighty-seven, thirteen, seven, eighty-six, three hundred and fifteen, eighty-seven, thirteen. Or even, who's the one who's got the show, whether it's Haiti TV, or the rest TV, who's obviously with the other media that we're there, who says that there's something, we're not able to Pastor Demosthen. And even, even they do well, they wanted to thank us for supporting us, the ballons, the vins, vins. They're always in twenty-one, twenty-one. It's about approaching marketing more enlarged. It's about YouTube, because, uh, uh, interaction, it's available on YouTube. They're capable of putting their social media. And then focusing on preneed. Pastor Demosthen, again, let's summarize rapidly for preneed.
I'm the one who preneed, uh, for not only saving money, but also, at times, in the moment of suffering, in the moment of failure, in the face of defeat, it's not easy. It's not easy to create three times. It's not easy to pressure economically. Because generally, even if it's a good situation, it's a bad situation.